It looks like the cameras are ready. Today is December the first. This is the work session. And the only item on the agenda is the operation budget for 2015. Simon, last week we had a few questions that had come up on the I.S. department. If you want to go ahead and make your presentation and answer those questions that came up last week, that'd be great.
Sure. And I can step through this as fast or slow as you want.
Well, you know a lot more about I.S. than we do, so you better go for fairly slow.
Okay. All right. But you can feel free to just tell me. So I put together a few slides about what the journey of the organization has been like from day one, since I started, what I thought the drivers were for what we wanted to do with the organization in the context of St. Charles County. This is a slide I shared with the department over and over again. So things existed before 2012. And starting in the middle of 2012, when I showed up, wanted to address a couple of things. One was around the culture and the staffing and trying to build an environment of trust, because it didn't seem like there was a lot of trust within the department. There were these different factions, and there was not a lot of teamwork that was going on amongst the people within the same department. And then going forward from that, if we got that right, then we could work on making the organization better. And once we make the organization better and partner with the different departments, then we could deliver more value to the county eventually. Right? So that's the long, other five-year plan. At the end of 2012, the start of 2013, we actually asked an outside firm, a local St. Charles County firm, to come in and assess the operations of the department. The trade-off was, I could have gone around and done it, but I was new to government, so I would have to understand a lot of the nuances. This team had done multiple governments before, worked not only in Missouri but within the U.S. They had some prepackaged questions they could ask and evaluate the organization. So they gave us a top-to-bottom assessment of what they found in St. Charles County I.S. So that's the assessment, those two blue arrows, and then Marco for where we are today.
Simon, can you just stop me for a moment? Just to give you some context back there. If you remember, the July before, the year before Simon joined us, we had a catastrophic meltdown of our computer system. We lost a lot of data. And Chuck came and talked to me at the time and said, "I want to do an external review of this department." So while we worked on amassing the money to do all that, in the meantime, Simon was hired, and so we left it up to him to whether to do it externally or internally. But he agreed that external had some advantages as well.
Sure. So the name of the company that did it was Core Group, like Creve Co., except it's called Core Group. I think they're based out of Lake St. Louis or Fallon. And they interviewed 20 to 30 people in the leadership position. So it could be assistant directors, directors, some staff, like key team members in different departments. And this is what they found as feedback, this is what they summarized as feedback, that the county wanted to see out of I.S. Right? So this answers some questions about where do you want the department to go, and then how should we build the organization to make sure that we develop this. They also kind of gave us a scorecard about the check mark. So this is a report card, and there's, if you want to call it certain subjects or areas. The checkmarks represent where they felt we were in terms of maturity for each of those areas. And the green squares represent what the business or the rest of the county felt they wanted I.S. to be in. Oops. So there was a lot of gap between what the expectations were and where we were in terms of delivering to those expectations. And so if you read some of the things, projects are not managed, functional competencies are inadequate, architecture needs planning, a whole range of different things to address. Right? So that's when I had the conversation with Chuck and Joanne, and I think that was before Jennifer was over the I.S. department, and tried to figure out how we would address it with staffing, with training, and then trying to manage the work that was coming into the department. Okay? Is the speed okay? Okay. So they also made four immediate recommendations that we, they prioritized four things for us and said, "These are the first four things you should work at. The rest of them you can tackle when you have time." And so the first one was a technology investment board in terms of when the county spends money on technology, is there anybody besides the department and I.S. deciding that it's the right way to go? Or is there any kind of oversight, a consensus agreement amongst a larger cross-section of business people that make a decision or prioritize what projects get done first? And so we finally got one budgeting cycle under our belts with the Technology Investment Working Group. It's a cross-section of about 10 directors, assistant directors from different departments that kind of have a say into what priority I.S. should be working on, different things. So that was number one. A program management office not only handles programs, but they also handle projects. You can think of programs as a collection of projects, like they kind of have some linkage, whatever set of projects that you work on. And that's also where the project management methodology gets implemented, so that anything that you deliver is delivered in a consistent manner, and that people know what to expect at different times. Security knowledge, we addressed by hiring somebody, and we're in the process of putting together an entire framework on security. And as a result of that, there's a ton of projects that follow from within security to all the things that we need to address. And we are doing all of them, we just can't do all of them at the same time. And structuring I.S. for better alignment with the business, and I can talk about that when we get into the actual structure of the organization, what we've done. Okay. So I took that information, I pulled some stuff out from the past about how IT organizations should run, and this is around governance, right? What things should you be focusing on? And the execute thing is, unless you keep the systems running and manage your costs, nobody's going to care about what else you can deliver. So that's phase one. The second one is partnering with the business, whatever units you're serving, because we exist solely to serve the other departments or the business, and doing a better job with that. And then, at the same time, improving whatever capabilities we have. And then, they always say change is constant, especially in technology. So how do we structure ourselves and how do we adapt with the change that's always supposed to be coming down the road? And the grow aspect, I've kind of de-emphasized for right now. In a revenue-generating organization or in a for-profit organization, you're always worried about top-end growth and how you contribute to growth, and how IT can help with that. Here, it's more around generating more value from the IT investment, right? So besides just putting the systems in that automated stuff, is there any value we can extract from that in terms of insights into the data, or better decision-making, or faster response time, or anything around those aspects? Or innovation, they talk about innovation in government, and there's plenty of examples of that. When do we get to that point? Should we get to that point? Those are the questions that, again, the twig should help us answer. So we took what Core recommended, took some of my ideas, kind of mashed it together into a strategic plan, and I've shared this with the administration in '13 and in '14. Kind of put a timeline around it. And the dotted lines just indicate what Core Group recommended. The rest of the stuff is what I thought we needed to focus on. Questions?
So recommendations are...
In the dotted lines that go around?
You're not necessarily doing that, you're doing...
Oh, we're doing both, actually. So whatever Core Group recommends plus what the things that I need to...
Okay, so the stuff that isn't surrounded is additional things that you added.
Correct.
Both are being done.
Correct.
Okay.
Simon, you had said that, you know, your customers basically are the various departments. And I saw that initially when we started, there was a report card that I guess the outside consultants do. Do you guys now also go back to your customers, okay, the department heads, and say, "Are we meeting your IT needs? Are we doing better?" Or, I'm sure you hear a lot of that, are you hearing from the departments that things are, "We're investing a lot more money in this." Are they saying things are better, things are smoother? Bob, you deal with this regularly, I mean, you think things are, it's worth the extra investment we're putting in? Is it getting, is things getting better?
From my interaction with I.S., I can tell you that we're places we've never been before, from the standpoint of support. Simon has appointed business managers that are assigned to different departments, and they're resident experts on your various needs as a department. And the customer service aspect of what we're getting now, hands down, is far better than it's ever been before.
So you're like his customer.
Yes.
It sounds like you're pretty happy with the additional investment we put in this.
Ninety-five percent of the complaints have stopped, and he probably has at least 30% of the departments complimenting him. It's unheard of.
Well, that should make your job much easier.
It does. It does.
Okay.
Makes Jennifer's job easy, too, because now she supervises it, but...
So we do quarterly reviews with the cross-section of the departments, and then we, every time we publish the results, we publish what, how they ranked us the last time. So the scores are three and a half to four, somewhere around there. So, yeah, they've been pretty happy. There's still demands on us, "Why don't you do this?" And you should be thinking about that. And we agree. We just have to, again, balance how much money do we have coming in and what can we get accomplished? And that's why that working group, that Technology Governance Board, if you think about it that way, is a big, big help for our department. So we are not the ones saying, "No, that we're not going to work on Mike's project," for example, next year.
I have a question.
Sure.
So what's your biggest challenge? I mean, obviously, money to do a lot of things is always the biggest challenge, but what's your biggest challenge that you see facing in 2015?
Security is one of them.
Okay.
And finding the right staff, because we have vacancies right now to be able to attract, because there's a certain type of person that wants to come work for the government.
Right.
And so to find somebody with the right skills and the right mix of person to come work here is hard. We've had some successes, we've had some people we brought on that didn't work out, and then we've had positions that we haven't been able to fill.
I saw that you had addressed the talent pipeline, that they didn't put that around there. I'm thinking, that's got to be huge for you, because it's got to be a challenge.
Right. And it is. And we're looking at different ways, perhaps doing internships at the universities, perhaps at some point, especially on the innovation, hooking up with the startup community, maybe in St. Charles and maybe in St. Louis, to help have them develop maybe mobile apps or whatever that use our data, whatever data we feel we could put out there. Because there's a whole bunch of people that are very talented, that would like to be more part of the community, and how can we leverage their skills and our data to help things that we want to do.
Yeah, because we get a couple buildings full of those folks just two blocks away.
Downtown St. Louis, our old post office.
St. Charles. Yeah, the old post office.
Yeah.
So I would assume there's a number of folks there that if we could, because I noticed you had down in the gray area that public-private partnerships.
Right.
So what are you thinking about that?
I've had...
That's gray, that's future, we'll get to that later.
Right.
I got you.
Did you meet with Randy?
I met with Randy, yes. And I met with some of the people downtown, too. Jennifer sent me on, well, no, that was broadband for the region, that was a separate conference. Yeah, but I've had conversations with him, yeah, definitely. So, yeah, always open to ideas, and again, we have to just put it in the pipeline of everything people would like us, would like to see us get done, and set the expectations about when we can start on it and when we can complete it.
And it'd be like Simon's development of the Technology Investment Working Group is, is that for the first time ever, the departments have been sitting down with each other and hearing what each other need. And so after they heard what those projects were about and they went to go rank jointly what were the projects, they did it as a group of departments, recognizing each other's needs. And Jennifer was really instrumental in that, and that's the first time we've ever done that. So probably something we need to adopt in other areas, too. But, you know, for a support department, that was the first time we'd ever done that.
I heard you say that one of your challenges is finding, you know, people.
Yeah.
And this is going to sound kind of different, but you might have to look outside of the normal county compensation plans. And the reason I say that, I have a son who just graduated a year ago with a degree in I.T. management, and he was telling me that they have a fully stocked kitchen, an espresso bar at their place that costs them nothing, they have a gym with a trainer that will come certain times at no charge. I mean, they do, to get these kids to come in that are talented, they're giving them a lot of perks that probably doesn't really fit in a normal county compensation plan, but that might be something you might have to look at down the road to get the right folks.
You're going to have Don take them out hunting.
Yeah.
Those are the ones that aren't working out. Just kidding, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
But it just amazes me that they were going to hit enter.
You're still looking for the "any" key, aren't you?
Yeah, we had an engineer leave last year for, I think, 25 to 30 grand more from public to private. And you can't really compete with that, right? Because everybody's trying to stop this IT talent.
Can we utilize contractors?
We have talked about that, yes. So that's another way of addressing short-term needs. Yeah. It gets expensive, though, right? Because the contractors work for firms, so not only are they making what they command in the marketplace, but then the firm takes a profit on top of that, too.
Right.
Tell me about your party you had last week. You had lemonade and cookies and...
Oh.
For everybody.
That's not enough to...
To attract people, yeah.
It's not an espresso bar, but hey.
Lemonade and cookies.
It was the first Christmas party this season.
I don't think government can compete with the salaries in the private sector, but local government offers a lot of other benefits that I think people need to know about. If they're thinking of a career, local government has a lot of benefits that can serve them and...
Oh, I definitely agree with that, right? And so that's the whole thing about the internship programs, is getting people into the pipeline so they're exposed to that kind of thing, and then maybe out of three or four people you keep one, or it's attractive to one of them, and they want to make a career out here. Yeah, I'm definitely not saying we're never going to be able to compete, but how do you get the word out?
That's why, that's why I was bringing it up, so if there's anybody that's interested, they should probably look at all the benefits there are for working for local government.
So this is just a snapshot of the things that we've done, or the status of different things, and I can skip over this unless there's questions. Okay?
Okay.
So a little bit about what the organization looks like, what the IT department looks like. And this is some idea of the number of tickets we close and the number of desktops we support, and some of the performance measures around network uptime and the number of helpdesk tickets that are closed on the same day. The department's divided into four divisions, if you want, if you don't count administration. There's two people up in administration. The technical services, that's basically the helpdesk, and the people that deal with all the equipment and the PCs. There's engineering that take care of all the backend, the data centers and the networks and security and all those types of things. There's the business applications group, that's the front-end customer liaisons, and that's a new group that didn't exist when I got here. So dedicated solely to running projects, understanding what the business does, making sure the projects get implemented, handling customer concerns, making sure we're doing things appropriately across the organizations. And then G.I.S., I think all of you are familiar with the G.I.S. function, right? Within...
What's architecture meaning in terms of I.S.?
Architecture, it's, and you can equate it to building architecture if you want. I mean, you can set out and start building a building without doing any design work or understanding what the uses of different things are. But if you don't plan those things, it's going to be less flexible going forward, or you might have to make changes. So same kind of concept applies to architecture, I mean, information systems. So the business applications group, eight people, that includes a manager. There's three business analysts, each of them have some subset of the departments. And then there's a couple of sprinklings of other functionality in there. And if you want to read, stop me, I'll just go through. On the system engineering side, we have one system architect that we've hired. There's a group of seven engineers listed on the budget thing, but one of them is an underfill at a lower grade level, right? So it's actually a wiring technician. And then there's an open position that was just in there for flexibility, and we're not expecting to fill that. So the count is really reduced by the one system engineer here. And there's an assistant director position at the administration level that is not funded either this year, so it's actually minus two from what's listed on the budget thing. Questions on engineering? No? Okay. And there's a total of four people in G.I.S., including the manager, there's two analysts and one technician. And one of the analysts is actually assigned to do dispatch and alarm work, although updating to street central line data, addressing all the functionality that's used to support that department. Okay?
The G.I.S. mapping service, does that fall under you?
Yes, the G.I.S. web map that's on the website falls under me. There's some G.I.S. functionality embedded in other departments also.
Do we have an idea when we're looking at doing the next aerial mapping? Because we were doing it, I noticed, every two years, but we didn't do one in '14.
We didn't do one in '14 because the STARS board that I sit on downtown voted $80,000 to do a flyover of the eight counties at a very good resolution, the same resolution as the last one we had, which...
Better than what we hit for the...
Right. And so that's been bid, it's scheduled to be flown this winter.
Oh, okay. Excellent. So we'll probably have that June, July?
Well, it probably took about 90 days after the flyover to actually get the data, I'm guessing, so, yeah. Late spring, early summer, I would...
Cool.
We should have the data.
I love that question.
I can find out exactly.
You want to do it with laser?
Yeah. The most visibility, right?
Yeah, they'll fly it this winter while the leaves are off, but then they got to, they got to ship the data, and I don't know all, everything involved in that, but I know it, the last time it was done, it took about 90 days to get the data out.
That's an amazing resource. I mean, it really is. When you really want to see where everything is in the county, that mapping software is amazing. Sorry, now I mean to labor your point.
No, that's fine.
I was just curious about that. When I saw G.I.S., I thought I would ask.
Sure. I know Google Earth is the same type of thing, so do they do it? I don't know how often they update theirs. I've seen the Google Mobile driving around town.
There's still a swing set in my backyard in the Google Earth, so it's not updated that often.
You don't play on your swing set anymore?
Not since it's not there anymore.
Yeah, and I think there's a few companies that basically do the flyovers and then sell it, the satellite imagery, and then they sell it to other companies, like Microsoft has it, so on, I'm sure, and that Google has it, so. The Google Mobiles, I think, are more for Google Maps and the street view. I'm not sure the Google Earth stuff, whether they do anything with it or they just buy the data. And so you're up to, you're at their mercy about whatever they, I guess, purchase.
I guess one of my questions, but to redefine a little bit, if it's already out there, do we need to do it again? Are there other sources of just buying the data that's already out there?
I think there's two things. One is, you're not licensed to use it. I mean, I'm hearing you correctly, can St. Charles County use the data in Google Earth? Is that the question?
Or something like that.
Or should we just tell people to go use Google Earth?
Well, either way, is there a way to license using the Google Earth data?
I think the last time I asked about that when it first came on, one, there was resolution issues about how good the resolution was.
Okay.
And then the second thing was latency of the data. Do we, I mean, if you're not doing any better than Google is doing, which I think we are, right? Because we introduce more data and more lines that's put into us that Google would never care about, onto that. If you're not doing any better than them, then why even do it, right? Just have them do it. But I don't think we'd be meeting the same needs like Mike's product, right?
Yeah, I just, Google Earth is, the resolution, for my purposes, and other people do it for other things, but I was able to find a duck line pretty easy on it, so it was amongst all the other clutter that was out there. So it is amazing what you can do from these services that are out there.
Right.
Our system provides, though, an overlay of the parcel map of the county also, which you won't get on Google Earth. It's a slick tool. It allows you to lay our information over the raw data that's just out there.
We'd have to go buy that information.
Okay.
Right?
Maybe you can sell our information to Google Earth. St. Charles County does better than anybody else.
Yeah.
It's clear, better resolution.
Sorry, didn't mean to hold you up.
No, no, I'm fine with questions. It's whatever you guys want to talk about. The technicians, as we talked about earlier, they're the ones that run around and replace PCs, monitors, install software, the ones that answer you on the phone when you call in and say, "I have an issue."
"I have an issue," that's been said before.
And I will say, they are available 24/7, because I know I was in on Saturday for a little while and the computer wasn't working right, and I called, and Mark picked right up and said, "I know we're having a problem, because we updated some software, and let me find out how long it's going to take." He was back on the phone in five minutes, saying, "We got to do this and this and this," so...
Okay, so kind of told you a little bit about the organization, and then I think the general question you got, the council was asking the last time, was, we're spending this money, how do we know it's a right amount of spend? Or should we be spending, I'm sure you weren't saying we should be spending more, but should we be spending less, and be, is that an adequate spend? So there's two ways to look at it. When we got Core, one of the reasons for the Core Group was, they had done this assessment for other counties, so they had information that we could kind of benchmark ourselves with. And then also, last year, we signed a subscription with Gartner, which is a technology company, and they have, they publish a lot of metrics about what they're seeing in different verticals, right? So it could be healthcare, it could be retail, it could be pharmaceuticals, and they also have a state and local government vertical. So the next couple of slides talk about where we stand in relative to other counties from two perspectives. So this was the Core Group assessment data from 2013, and the numbers might not be as visible on that screen. I don't know how visible it is on the printout, either.
Sir, hello, David. So G.I.S. came out.
Not there?
Somebody's missing a page.
I don't have a page nine.
It only printed a random page.
Because you were giving it up.
You have the master.
Well, I can send you.
I can both, it switches midway.
I can send you the.
Oh, yes, tell them we need to learn how to use our copy.
So as a cost-cutting measure, we only print every odd page. If we double the budget, we'll start printing even pages from now.
I hope that odd page wasn't the important.
And if you just look at the summary at the bottom, and I can email out this presentation where it's a lot more visible, but the summary that call group said was, if you look at certain metrics like IT as a percent of the county budget, and actually there, they meant county revenue and not the county budget, or if you look at the ratio of number of employees in IT to the number of employees in the county, or if you look at total revenue and you divide it by the number of employees that you have, what is the revenue by employee? It doesn't really make any sense that not every employee is making that, but it's just a metric to compare across industries, right? So those are a few things. And the median comparison column is when they measured us in 2000, middle of 2013. And then the 2015 column is updated. I put some numbers in, in terms of where we would be using the 2015 proposed budget numbers. So St. Charles, I'm sorry, St. Charles, the column that says St. Charles is where we were in 2013. The median comparison is if you looked at all the subset of counties that they showed on that section at the top, that was the median of those counties' numbers. So in 12, that St. Charles column, in 13, we were way behind what the median was in terms of counties, comparable subset of counties. And we've made some strides in 15. But just as a percent of county revenue, we are nowhere, it's, I mean, we're still in the same ballpark, we're below, but we're not running 10 times higher than what other counties are paying. Does that help? Or does confuse matters a little?
Okay, what county, did they look at comparable counties, or did you look at?
I think they looked at some smaller and some larger. They have Prince William County, Waukesha County in Wisconsin, Dade County, Florida, Travis County, Texas, Brazos County, Texas, Glynn County, Georgia.
Those are some of the counties that, like EDC, whenever they do comparisons, those are some of the ones they look at, because their demographics are similar to ours.
Right, right.
Okay, as a member of the generation ahead of the millennials. Don't print things like this. I'm one of the youngest ones here.
It's too small.
It's too small. Okay, I can't read that, I can't read that, and I can't read this.
You want to put these with those? If you give it to me, I can hold it over here.
This is ridiculous. Put one page, one screen on each page.
Okay, no problem.
Make it big enough to read.
Sure. Okay, so that's one way of looking at it. Another way to look at it is, I took Gartner's metrics, right? And the right-hand side is Gartner, I pulled three metrics from Gartner. The first one is IT spending as a percent of operational expense, is what percent of the operating budget is the IT budget. And the second metric is IT spending by employee, right? That's similar to what call pulled out. And then again, IT employees as a percent of employees. So that circle illustrates where St. Charles County is, right? Below $250 million. So not only do they look at state and local government, but they look at it in different buckets, based on what the size of that local government is, or state government is. So we would compare ourselves to the smallest bucket over there, and then based on that comparison, those are what our numbers look like. So you can see that IT employees, the bottom number as a percent of total employees, is actually lower than the average, whatever this average means. But we are slightly over as a percent of the operating budget. And Bob, I did include the amount in the capital and the maintenance contracts in this number two, so that's a combination of both those numbers. So if you look at it from a strictly dollar perspective, then yes, we are slightly over. If you look at it from a headcount perspective, then.
You're way under.
We're way under. But I don't know how to reconcile that, right? It's like higher more people at cheaper rates, which, they're already fighting a battle right now. And again, there's no right or wrong answer, this just kind of gives you some sort of comfort level of where we are, or some sort of reading on where we are. Okay, so having said all of that, here's a couple of things that I think we've made good strides, and we've reduced the risk to the organization in terms of disaster recovery and backups, and we've stood up a secondary data center in Kansas City. We've implemented a security framework where we are tracking all the different things that people publish these best practices about what every organization should be doing, right? And that's another framework you can pull off different websites. And so the new security person is actually going through that, and again, doing this gap analysis. This is what it says, this is where we are, what do we need to close that gap? We've talked about the customer service, proud of addressing the culture and training. It's trying to increase the trust in the organization to get people to want to work here, right? The non-monetary benefits of working for St. Charles County and then for the IS department within St. Charles County.
There you go, Dave.
Business analysis around writing business cases for projects, right? Trying to get the requirements down, trying to understand. We haven't got to return on investment or return on investment capital yet, but if we ever get down to that point as a way of looking at projects, we could. Project management is a new thing we've implemented because there's so much demand. How do we know that we handle the projects the same way? Or people, how do we set your expectations when you're a customer about what we're going to deliver, when we're going to deliver, and at what cost? Governance is just, again, around having a plan for the overall organization, right? Are we getting the value that we're putting into it? And we kind of, sort of talked about architecture in reference to your question earlier. We didn't have an architecture, that was one of the things that was called out in the assessment, and so now we have a person that's focusing on architecture. And it could be technical architecture, it could be hardware architecture, it could be data architecture, the architecture could be multiple things within IT. This is a list of projects and the status. I think this was accurate about two weeks ago. These were all the things we were trying to get done in 14.
Red means?
Red means we didn't get to it, or we are behind where we thought we were going to be.
Okay.
So vendor management, for example, and there's a print management thing. We had a person that was going to work on it, and then they retired, so now we are at the starting gate with nowhere to go.
They don't do much since they retired, huh? That was for you.
And then this is a list of things coming up in 15. This is, again, going through that investment group, the technology working, technology investment working group. Those were the top six we said we could handle. I think there's another one at the bottom of the list that had to get done, but didn't have time to make it through that process, so.
What is the first one? Travel demand modeling software?
So this is for transportation and John Greifse. I understand the models that they built for traffic and the effects of what happens when you shut down a road or close the highway here or there. That also, kind of like the satellite imagery, needs to be updated based on what changes have occurred in the meantime.
Like opening a new highway through the middle of the county.
Right, right. So it's a lot of work around, and we're not going to do all the work, we're just around the systems aspect of it, but the work actually is, I think, through a third-party company that comes in and captures data on traffic and then builds these models for whatever they want to build models for.
See you.
Sure.
Looking back at the budgets from 2012, total budget, total expenses were about $1,006, and I will, you know, over $3 million. So we've been investing money like this, a lot of it was necessary since the system's crashed.
Correct.
But do you anticipate that to keep going like this? Should we get a fight to offer soon?
I think we are basically going to, and again, it's, what does the technology working group want IT to be doing, right? I mean, if the ask is, we still want you to deliver twice what you have in the last two years, then we have to see whether we can deliver that or not with the resources that we have. If people are now pretty happy with what we are, we don't need that incremental improvement in customer satisfaction, or going from 99% availability to 99.5, all those things, those little itty-bitty improvements, then I think we are basically plateaued out. And even looking at the metrics, we are basically getting to that point over there, in terms of staffing size.
Second. No, that's fine, I just, I mean, I realize, you know, I remember quite distinctly when that system crashed, and we definitely needed to spend money, but you just want to know that there's light at the end of the tunnel. It sounds like it's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it looks like most of the money's in people.
Yeah.
Of that expense. I mean, if you put the whole compensation package together, that's, that's two and a half of that $3 million, so.
You're not seeing a lot of the software that's built out of the departments, I believe, too. So there's a lot of money, I think, all the way through, but I think it's a good return on investment. If customers are happy, that's what counts, right?
Yeah. I also prepared a list of all the software that's being used in the different departments. I'm not sure if there's any interest in that or not.
I think we're good.
Yep. This might be tiny print.
Trying to get it all on one page?
Hey, how's it?
Everybody does that, they always want to get it on one page and so too.
Like, spend another page. Like Lindenwood or St. Charles Community College, do you have that partnership working now, or are you hoping to?
We're hoping to start that. So one of the things, we spent some time, and Jennifer's team, Colleen, in the Public Information Office helped us do, along with HR, was come up with a brochure about why come work for St. Charles County.
Okay.
So we finally got that going. And I think we made an ask for educational reimbursement for people that come to the county and then want to keep current on their skills, or come in without a degree and want to go get their degree. Is there a way to reward them for doing extra than the normal eight to five job? So I think we got both things going. As soon as we get clearance on that, then we can go out to Lindenwood or Community College and then hype those as benefits.
Cool. I was just curious about bringing in some people, like we had talked before about maybe when some people retire and leave some positions, that rather than replacing that position, it may not need to be a full-time position, maybe it's a part-time position. So I know I have one college kid about to have a second one here in a few months, so part-time jobs.
Sure.
Work out really well. I didn't know if those, you know, if we had looked at those type positions and maybe not, I mean, if we do that, that takes care of a lot of that employee cost that we don't have if they're a part-time employee as opposed to a full-time employee, just looking at the compensation package. But it lets them sort of test drive.
Sure.
Working for us without costing us as much and them not having a full investment in it. But hopefully, we can at least get updated people hungry to work, they need the money. So we're not into that competitive battle with Joe's son who's already graduated, and we can, we can get them while they're still in the pipeline before they've, before they've seen the other side of the road yet, and they have their own espresso machine at the desk. So we can get them before their private gym membership kicks in. So that's the thing, I was just kind of curious if we had looked at some of that and.
We've actually put money in the budget for, I think it's either professional services or part-time work. We've not spent that money both in 14, 13 and in 14.
Okay.
So we have explored that, we just haven't gotten to the point where we've really executed on it well.
Cool. If you decide you're at a point to talk to Lindenwood or St. Charles, please let us know.
Okay, sure.
Love to help with that. I know people at the community college especially that are on.
Oh, great, I'll definitely.
Just looking at him, thinking about that.
Simon, looking at page 35 of the budget, there's a part that just had me concerned when there's significant discrepancies between, or differences, rather, between what the department requested and what the executives recommended budget was.
Sure.
And, you know, at the end of the day, it ends up, you know, 34 employees were requested at generally lower end, and what was, what the executives recommended is a few, fewer people with a little bit heavier weighting on the, towards the upper end.
Right.
Is the way that I've kind of looked at it. But are you going to be able to accomplish the goals that you've outlined with these employees, or do you want to make a case for having more employees at lower pay grades?
So part of the, what we called the reclass internally, so if you look at the system engineer two line where it went up to seven, it was actually, we asked for two, but we got seven, is a consolidation of some of the lower levels, like the system engineer one. And that, we're trying to address, again, when people come in and do a good job, as opposed to coming back and getting another ordinance passed for changes and things, can be reclassified and tag functionality at a higher level, and then kind of underfill, so they have some sort of a career path to grow towards, within that, within that pay grade, right? So it's not so much that we're changing classifications of a lot of people wholesale within the department, those, the tech three position, the system technician three, and the system engineer two positions were put in to account for some growth within those technical fields.
Okay.
In terms of your direct question on, do we want to make an ask for more people at a lower salary than what we've already asked for? No, I think salaries, we're having a hard time, and I have another handout on that if you want to see that, in terms of how long it takes us to fill positions. We're having a hard enough time attracting people at the salaries we're advertising, and a couple of times I've had to go back to Belinda, and she's been gracious enough to allow advanced starting salaries, because that's what they're seeing, that's what they're competing with sometimes. And we always discount, we're never going to match what the private sector has, so we discount that. And even at that, we're not able to get the right talent in, so, yeah, I don't want to change.
And if you remember, a couple of months ago, we did an ordinance that created a series that when Simon hires in, that's what he was referring to, that he doesn't have to come back to reclass somebody, and that's actually what you're seeing there. If you see the system engineer ones, where there were five, it's now blank, and the system engineer two, where there were two, there, it's now seven. They, the individual within that hasn't necessarily moved, but the, they're now in a series. They come in as a one when they reach the certifications, when they reach the required skill level, then Simon's able to promote them to the two without coming in for a formal reclass and a change in the ordinance. So that's what, what that's about for both the system engineers and the system technicians.
I think Belinda talks about that a couple of weeks ago at the meeting, when she had talked about reclassifying some folks.
Okay.
I was listening, see?
Any other questions for IS? I think we're good.
Thank you for your presentation.
Very good. Okay, looks like we have community development up next. Dave?
All right. Looks good to me.
All right, well.
Community development starts on page 74, and just a couple of general comments on that. From the revenue side of community development, it's largely in an administrative department, with the exception of the building division, which we budget for building permits every year. And we've budgeted $900,000 this year in building for 2015, in building permit fees, which is down a little bit from 2014, where we estimate the building permit revenues to be, I think we're estimating building permit revenues to be at $950,000 in 2014. So essentially, in the same neighborhood, development-wise is the assumption for 2015 as far as building permit fee revenue is concerned. Hopefully, we see better than that and see building continue to improve, but we didn't want to be budgeting on the if come, essentially, that's the rationale behind $900,000. Yeah, and also, you've got licensing and stuff and other things in there that.
Yeah, there's some other revenue sources in there as well.
Because, I mean, some of the people, people in the, staff in the building department have to maintain all that data, too. And really, there was a big change in the building department years ago, that we tried, we switched it to try and be self-sufficient, and since you're providing a service to contractors, and so far, that formula's worked out pretty well, I think, for the county.
Yep, yep.
Well, it avoids that argument for people in the cities that they're paying twice for the same thing.
Right, yeah.
So in the, in community development, we have four divisions. We have planning and zoning, we have the building department, development review.
and Zoning. We have the Building Department, Development Review, and then Neighborhood Preservation. And those pages start, as I said, on, on page seventy-four, and about every third page or fourth page is, is another division. Generally, the, the staffing in these departments is, is still at reduced levels from where it historically was pre-recession. This, this department got hit pretty hard when, when the building levels in the county fell into the trench because of the recession. And we reacted accordingly by downsizing and reclassifying people in this department. The, some positions have, have not been funded since 2012. In 2015, I think we've, we've deleted two positions in the Planning and Zoning Division, a Community Planning Manager and a General Office Assistant Three. So, we're still on a, on a net decrease of staffing in this department from where we were, say, in 2008. So, it's not quite back to normal staffing levels, and we're, we're just seeing how it goes year to year. And as demand continues to increase, we can adapt our staffing levels to the demand once the demand is established and not ahead of time.
I'm just glancing. It looks like things are up some, but not huge.
Performance metrics, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Right.
I mean, I don't know that we need to make really a goal of getting back to where things were in, from a personnel standpoint, oh, oh-eight, oh-nine numbers and, or prior to oh-eight, oh-nine, until those numbers start improving.
Right, right.
Showing increases also.
And that's one, that's one of the reasons why we've kept revenue on a slight downturn from what we expect for this year. We just don't know at this point, and it's, it's best to be conservative.
Now, there's a lot of properties out there right now that are vacant, that already have the zoning to build.
Right.
So, until that catches up, you probably won't see a lot of new subsidies.
And Wayne's understood that that's Steve's, that's Steve's expectation, is, is that we're not just putting staff back to put them back, but only if the demand is there. And it's certainly not there yet, although things are improving.
We are not looking at a plat, though. We have a plat on the...
Yes.
Which is...
Dwella Road.
First one.
Long Cal. North Dwella Road, right?
Since, since what? Since, since you were on the council? No, really. I mean, I don't, I don't think we've seen a plat and...
We used to have, we used to have four or five plats on an agenda.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a good sign that maybe things are coming back.
Right.
Okay.
I don't know if you have any other questions. Largely, the, the operating levels of these departments are very consistent with prior years. I think it is in the Planning. Don't be deceived by the jump in expenditures. On page seventy-six, it shows expenditures in the Planning and Zoning Department of a million four seventy-eight compared to a million one last year. The reason for that is, you'll see, there's, there's two grant programs. Under Professional Services, we have a pass-through with the Community College, and there's a, we're, those funds have not yet been fully expended. The eight fifty-eight, six thirteen is less than what was appropriated last year. That's, that eight fifty-eight is just a carryover from last year. And then there's a new grant program this year in flood mitigation assistance that is five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The revenue for these two items is in our grant revenue section of the, revenue section of the budget. So, when you extract those two line items from this budget, you'll see the dollar numbers are, are very consistent with prior years.
Any questions, comments on Community Development?
I just wanted to, you know, we talked about the situation on Avon Drive, a flooding situation. I'm just curious, I asked Wayne, Mr. Anthony, if we funded a buyout, if we could get reimbursed somehow from the federal government, and he's researching that to see if that's possible, you know, somewhere down the line. But the interim, if we did agree as a council executive to buy out those properties, where would we find that money? Would it come out of Community Development or...
We'd have to basically appropriate the money. There's no money really appropriated at this point for an expenditure like that.
Will you mention some flood mitigation money?
Well, there's...
What's that your mark for?
I'm not very familiar, I'm not very familiar with that program, but...
John, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, that's an ongoing situation on...
On the flood buyout properties?
Yeah, Avon Core.
We've got some of that money from Community Development operating.
C D B G.
That's where we budgeted part of that money issue.
Okay.
I think what John's talking about is another project within that that's, that hasn't been contemplated as part of the budget.
A single property?
Yes.
One or two?
Well, it's actually two. One has been accepted, and one has been denied because they did not put enough claims in, you know, for damages through the years. So...
Let us take a look.
Pardon me?
Let us take a look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, do you want any comments for just Community Development in general?
Yeah.
I had a couple.
Okay.
First of all, I want to point out that you may recall that Wayne Anthony embarked on a software program for about three or four, maybe all four of his departments. A very new way to look at managing the department. And we're going to have him come in and give individual presentations for all of these departments so that you can see, people will be able to go online, get their building permits, we'll be able to monitor their inspections, order their inspections online. It's a really new way of looking at things. Well, at least three of these departments are going to be using these software programs, but maybe all four of them, as we check out. We're going to have him come in, probably starting next month, to give, as we implement these, give you a presentation as to how these programs are. So, I just want to point it out to you, get them on the schedule as they become employed. He wants to make sure that they're up and running properly before he makes the presentation.
Fantastic.
Second thing I'd like to point out is on page eighty-three, you will see that the, we're about to talk about the differences this year. In years past, 2012, there was a transfer from Road Bridge to four hundred and thirty-two thousand, all the way to 2014, three hundred and fifty thousand. I'd like to point out that what that transfer is, is at one time, Development Review was actually a function of the County Highway Department. And they had personnel in that department that actually did that sort of work. The previous administration, County Executive Overworth, wanted to switch that over into a different department, away from Road Bridge. And in a way to soften the blow for the general fund, he transferred money from Road Bridge, where that function actually was, was for years, and transferred those funds into the general funds so they could be used in advantage. Since Steve has been in office, what we intend to do is to gradually get rid of that, that subsidy from Road and Bridge. It's now a department on its own. We wanted to gradually get rid of it. And this year, we were able to successfully remove that subsidy. So, that's what that, it shows now the executive recommended of zero. So, we'll get more highway funds used for highways rather than development review.
Fantastic.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't catch that. Good explanation. Any other questions, comments, community development-wise? Seeing done, let's move on to Sheriff slash Police. Tom, good, good, good timing on your part.
As a matter of opinion.
The Police Department is the caption we're operating with now for the 2015 budget, formerly the Sheriff's Department. And we have both the outgoing sheriff and sheriff-elect here with us tonight, and...
What, what page are we on?
I'm sorry, page one twenty-seven is the beginning, or it's one twenty-six is the beginning of the Police Department. One of the things we've done is, is we've kept the, the divisional format the same as we have had in prior years as far as the police operations are concerned. The newly-elected sheriff for 2015 is a separate department shown in this year's, in the 2015 budget that starts on page one sixty-six. So, Court Security, Bailiff, Civil Process, under the newly-elected sheriff are, are now an extracted department in and of itself. And the Police Department will, will continue in its current divisional format like we've had in prior years. The F T E count between the new Police Department and the new Sheriff Department is essentially the same. I think it's a half of F T E higher in 2015 collectively than it is presently in 2014.
Good.
And that relates to a very talented crime scene, not crime scene, but I don't know why the word don't come to me, but...
Forensic, forensic.
Forensics investigator that is being reclassed and the grants paying for half of it and we're paying for the other half. It was in an unfunded position. And there is also a detective that the, is being funded out of the Drug Enforcement Funds at, at Sheriff Neer's request. So, other than that, the only additional funds are there was the reclassification.
Okay. We talked a little bit last time about the pay grade increase for commissioned police officers. So, any, at this point, I don't have a whole lot to add to the discussion other than what questions or topics you all would like to discuss, myself or Sheriff Neer.
I'll open it up to Tom first. Anything that, any highlights of the budget you want to talk about or details of it or...
No, sir, not really. Probably, all I can really say about it is all budgets that I've been involved in over all the years. This is the first one that I've been eighty percent satisfied with.
That's passing grades on.
It's a B minus.
Yeah, B minus.
It's a B minus.
Is that above or below where you were before?
That's way above.
That's way above. Good, okay. Just looking to clarify that. You're not twenty percent less satisfied. You're twenty percent more.
You're a calculator, boy.
I like how you put the score to it.
I'd like to just say something, too, because Tom, as, this is his last year in, in county government. And he's got the largest department with the most personnel, and at the same time, he's one of the easiest departments to budget with because of just the way that he, his captains, Jim Ray, those guys, all really put together a tremendous package. And they, they have it down to a science, and they've, they've done an excellent job over the years. I'm going on seven years here, and I, somewhere along the line in the process, I make the comment every year to somebody that he's got the largest department, most personnel, and, and potentially the most headaches from a budgetary standpoint. And he's, he's one of the easiest departments to get through the process. And I just wanted to acknowledge that publicly because he's, this is his last hurrah in that regard. So, I just needed to say that.
Fantastic. Glad to hear that. Scott, I assume you've had time to look at the budgets that you're going to be working with for a few short weeks. Any questions, comments, concerns that you want to share with us?
No, just still trying to learn the lingo. You know, there's some positions that, you know, the title, what they actually do, but Tom and I are going to go through all that. He's going to educate.
There you go.
He looks good.
All right. We'll follow his lead on the budget process, and we'll make Bob a very happy man.
I have a question, Bob, on this. It's hard to, to break this out, and I don't have an ad machine, but if you take the combined budget of the new Sheriff's Department and the new Police Department and combine them and compare to what we were spending under the old system, comparable?
Can we take out the reclasses on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, very comparable, I think.
It's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars difference when Debbie ran it for me about two weeks ago.
Okay, so it's within the estimates that Tom...
Tom said it'd be plus or minus a hundred thousand dollars, and he certainly has held to that.
That's, that would, that's a good thing for the critics to hear.
Good question. Thank you. Yeah, glad you pointed that out. Any, any other comments, concerns, questions about Sheriff and/or Police Departments?
How are we with the overtime stuff with Ferguson? Okay.
Um...
Obviously, that's an ongoing...
We have not added up from Monday and Tuesday of last week, but before that, it was at thirty-eight thousand for ours.
Thirty-eight or forty-two. Maybe I was anticipating another bad night.
And we have not gotten the numbers from the cities, but, you know, they've agreed to, to pay their own unless there would be some federal money that fell out of the sky, which I don't think, if you've been reading the press, I don't think that's going to happen, so...
You know, on that same note, I thought about this. Some, you know, engineers use a thing called benefit-cost ratios. You look at the benefits you receive and what the cost is, and you look at the ratio. I wonder if those mutual aid agreements that we have with places like St. Louis County are enough of a benefit to, to our citizens to be worth the costs that we just spent in Ferguson and other times.
Are you talking about dollars or human lives?
Probably both, Tom. Okay. I mean, that's a question for you, and I'm sure you ask yourself that question, too.
Every day.
Yeah.
Or the spillover domino effect also that, that's, I mean, it's better to stop it there than, than to wait until it spreads to St. Charles County and, and then try to react to it here.
We just hope we never have to ask them to help us like they've been doing. But if we do, they'll be there. By the other, another thing while we're on that, I talked to Tom Dempsey today, and he said the governor's talking was, was there anything in the press today, the governor talking about a special session?
Yes.
In December.
He also withdrew it. He announced the special session yesterday, and today he withdrew it.
He withdrew it.
Well, he said they could do the special session without having to have a special session, which I thought was interesting.
He thought that he had the authority to spend the money without them.
Without them. And this is far...
Paying the National Guard and the Highway Patrol.
Right.
And the Highway Patrol.
He's realized he has sufficient funds to do that.
Does he have sufficient funds to reimburse us?
He's never offered that.
No, I know he hadn't offered it, but I mean, is that something we should encourage our delegation to try to, try to find some state money or something?
I don't think it would hurt to ask.
Well, we're going to meet with them next week. I'm just, we'll know more about what...
My point in asking that question was we're, we're okay. We have the money to cover what we've done. So, cool. That was all I was curious about.
Okay.
I know that wasn't, we didn't have a Ferguson budget line, so I, I didn't see that in there. Just curious if we were okay.
I, I, you know, the city of St. Louis, the numbers there, St. Louis County, too, they're throwing out these unbelievably high numbers. I can't believe that they're not going to try to get the state to at least help.
They, I mean, publicly, they've said that they've inquired and that they've been told no, and that there's not going to be any reimbursement to them either. I mean, they've, I forgot what the last number was. Jennifer, do you remember what the last number was? I mean, it was getting close to two million dollars, but long before they got into...
It was much more than that.
Yeah, like two point four before they got into...
Yeah, it was way more than that.
To change the subject a little bit, under the prosecutor on page one seventeen, I just had one question. If that's not on our, this is the review. Under the, page one seventeen, where it says number of victims asserted and the bad checks.
Included?
Yeah, there's no estimate for 2014 or proposed for 2015. Is there a reason for that?
No, should be something there, or we'll have to find out.
I just, I, I was just hoping we weren't getting rid of...
We solved that whole problem. That's what I, that's the way I interpret that.
Problem gone.
No more bad checks will be written in St. Charles County. Yeah, most businesses use Telecheck. That's almost, you know, I haven't prosecuted a bad check since Telecheck came out, so...
We take them hunting with Don.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, I don't think they're prosecuting as many bad checks as they used to.
Okay.
Are we on to other departments?
No, we're back to our schedule here of... No, we're back to our schedule here of Parks, which is next.
Parks, page 246. Very robust and growing department as we require and develop our park system in the county. Aside from miscellaneous revenue from permits and user fees and things like that, the Parks Department is funded by the use tax that was voter-approved. And we've held the voter, or the revenue for 2015 at estimated levels in 2014, which is $7.6 million. We budgeted $6.5 million in 2014. We're actually going to collect about $7.6 million this year in use tax, and we're assuming that value for the 2015 revenues next year. The department itself has one new employee, which is a park supervisor. As we continue to expand the number of properties, Betty has asked for one additional park supervisor to help keep all the park properties covered as well, covered well. The, if you look at the operating budget on page 252, you'll see that the numbers are like $2,000 different than what the 2014 budget was. So, the Parks operating budget is as flat as flat can be essentially.
Officially down 2,000, not up.
That's 2,000 down, yeah. The biggest area of flex that Betty has in her budget is actually in the capital line items. When you see the first two line items there, land acquisition and site development. If her revenue begins to contract for some reason, she can adapt her budget very easily just by slowing down the rate of site development and parks development that she's undertaking. And if the need does not arise for a land acquisition, there's a $3 million buffer there as well. So, the Parks Department itself is very well-funded and has been all along. Gives us the ability to do what we're doing there and put together a first-rate parks system in St. Charles County. So, all that to say that the Parks budget is very stable. It's easily adaptable, and it's being run without throwing a lot of additional personnel out there. We're increasing staffing in the Parks Department on a onesie-twosie kind of approach as needed and not just throwing a lot of bodies out there and building a big bureaucracy.
Do we know where we're at on Bromley Sack and Community College and the Kisker-Pittman Hill? Do we know where we're at on those?
Bromley Sack, they're going to waste a spring to open it.
To open it.
They could have pushed it a little. They could have pushed it a little bit, maybe got it open, you know, last month or something, but they figured it was that late in the season. They might as well just make sure it's all completely finished.
Well, I can't imagine it's going to be a big scream to use it until spring.
Yeah, so, you know, as soon as, hopefully, the first nice day, we'll have it open.
Okay.
And I think on Pittman Hill, we need to, we've got our results.
We do.
They did a survey?
Yeah. We sent them back to the people who, did you all get copies? We need to make sure you get those. Yeah, a couple of weeks ago, we sent the people who had filled out the survey, we sent them the results. And I guess we overlooked sending them to you, so we'll do that. And it's, there wasn't a whole lot of surprises on there. Was there joy in about how they wanted to do things they wanted?
Playing fields, walking paths, event space, you know, what you would expect people want in an area that's populated.
They didn't care about another lodge. I was surprised at that. I think that's because a lot of them probably haven't seen Quail Ridge. But that was way down the left. I was a little disappointed with that. But anyway, you know, I want to get started on that because that's...
Right, Stephen, unless you see Quail Ridge, you don't know that Quail Ridge is an option. It's something that's, that's pretty cool. I mean, it is extraordinary to have that in a county department.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think people who've seen Quail Ridge would think, you know, that's something we ought to have.
Is it something that we're looking at maybe incorporating?
Well, yeah, I mean, we need to get a, we need to get a plan here. That's what I'm saying. And I think this winter, we need to get something. You guys obviously are welcome to participate at any level. We'll eventually have to bring it to you for the money.
When we look at, you know, you can't have everything, obviously. To me, the lodges make a lot more sense from an active use standpoint rather than restoring historic houses. I just, I think that the public has more value in the lodge-type ones rather than some of the houses that are important, yes, but how important compared to...
Yeah, I think if we did this right, you know, our usage of that park could equal all the rest of them put together just because of where it's located.
That's right.
Yeah, I believe it will.
We were just having a conversation with some people about it yesterday, so I was, that's why I was curious. Do we know where we are on the, just golf course and at the Community College?
They've started construction. I don't, I'm not sure.
They're underway with construction.
Do we have a target date for that, probably spring also?
Oh, I think definitely by spring.
Okay.
Maybe before that. I'm trying to remember what it was they ran into when they were digging over there, but I know they're well underway.
Indian burial ground or something like that?
No, no, no.
Good, okay.
No, no bodies and not many. And they also, we're also beginning with the permission of the family, the survey for Spring Bend, which, you know, has a life estate on it. But the family member who's still alive has graciously given us permission to go ahead and begin the planning process for that. So, the property that overlooks the river off of the page area there, Spring Bend, which is a beautiful piece of property.
And we haven't forgotten the Hackman property.
No, I'm coming up with a whole different fact if I got a second. Okay? I had this discussion years back with Chuck Gross regarding funding for Family Arena, okay? And so, I want to do a little bit more homework on. So, I went back to the original survey before the Parks Tax even got done. It was '96, there was a thing, a survey, professional survey done about why we needed parks and recreation. And it states right here, there are serious deficiency in other types of park and recreation facilities valued by St. Charles County residents. So, back in '96, they lumped them together and said, yeah, we are needing parks and recreational facilities. I think the Family Arena is a recreational facility, okay? We're funding $2.5 million of that Family Arena, paying the bond payments out of capital improvement sales tax money. And I heard last meeting, Jennifer put a real good presentation about how we need a new emergency communications facility. So, knowing that the Parks staff is about $3.5 million, the other operating expense is about $1 million, so they're spending $4.5 million a year. They're taking about $7.5. We just heard there's about a $3 million buffer. I think you guys need to consider spending some of that Parks extra buffer money towards Family Arena because it is a recreational facility, no differently than youth activity park or anything else. And then maybe that would free up some money to get that emergency communication center rolling because from what I've saw, the leaky pipes and everything else, that's a pretty critical, vital part of county infrastructure that I think we need to get going on. And I think that there's probably not a whole lot more county land we need to buy. And we've got years to develop those parks, okay? But if we have one major emergency or something really trashes with that new system because we didn't spend the money on that infrastructure, I think we're regretting that. So, that's my two cents worth. I just wanted to...
Congratulations, Jennifer.
You just got $2.6 million.
You sold at least one of them.
There you go.
I mean, it looked to me like there was a way to fund it there if you start taking...
We talked about that, doing that already this year, didn't we? As it's beginning, you know, we had the free skates and what we were going to try to fund some of the utility cost of keeping the ice, you know, out of the parks because people were, we had free skates down there. Yeah, once the hockey season starts. Yeah, yeah.
So, can we not lease that ice time out to hockey clubs and stuff? Or is that just not something that we wanted to get into doing? Or is this not the time to ask that question?
No, it's...
Totally possible.
It's not easy, though. I mean, we thought it would be easy, too. We brought it up last year. And the problem is so long as you have a team skating, you know, they also need it for practice time.
Well, luckily, we don't have that problem anymore.
And it may be easier then, but, so, I mean, but we're, you know, it's one of those things where you also have to time when you're not doing a conversion to some other event.
Right.
And sometimes the same folks who are willing to rent that ice want to see it regularly. And that's the part that gets difficult.
Okay.
But it's not beyond possibility, and we need to, we need to work on that.
Well, I think we can legitimize if we just open a building up for just people walking, you know? Walkers, you know, like mall walk. I mean, that's recreation.
That's a good time.
Walk the concourse?
Yeah, that's quite rare.
We use it for more recreational purposes, and maybe we can justify spending some Parks money for the bond payments of $2.5 million a year. Free up the money for Jennifer to start working on that building building.
Have we looked at it?
That's a lovely styling. Good job.
Okay.
Okay.
We got two areas, we got two areas that we didn't get to tonight, so we'll hold those over until a short work session, I guess, before the next...
What were the areas? What did we miss?
We didn't do dispatch and alarm and Family Arena. I don't think either one of them...
We started on Family Arena, obviously.
Yeah, we did. I don't think either one of them will take very long, so we'll get it... Okay. We'll get, we'll wrap that into the next work session, and we'll get the times out. I'm thinking at least six. Yeah. Schedule it for six. Okay? All right, we got three minutes to break down, and we'll do the...
Ready breaks.